Ninety-one point seven, Moscow Pullman, KNWV ninety point five, Clarkston, Lewiston.
Disoriented.
Okay, I'd like to call the Wednesday, April twenty-seventh, two thousand and sixteen, planning, meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission to order. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of April thirteenth. Does anybody, everybody had a chance to look at them? Any additions, corrections?
I'll make a motion we approve.
On for you?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, missed approved. Next item is correspondence. Mike, do you have any correspondence from staff?
Nothing from staff this evening.
Should this be the point where we ask about the field trip in-house or for the?
We probably just do it at the end of the meeting.
At the end, okay, sounds good. All right, so anybody else? Moving on, Transportation Commission report from Joel.
The Transportation Commission met two weeks ago, on the fourteenth. The, we pretty well finished up the bicycle route wayfinding signage, which we've been dealing with over some period. And we spent a rather interesting part of the meeting talking about a proposal that's being developed, talking about a health services district parking plan.
Oh, oh, yeah.
That deals with parking issues around the South Main area, Gritman, and it's more than just Gritman, of course, there's a range of other health services providers in the area. There is a discussion about, well, designating various of the parking lots for particular purposes. There, of course, are people who come and go as visitors and patients at the various providers. And there's desire to open up some of the, and keep some of the on-street parking available for people who come and go. So there's discussion about possible permit systems that might, might, might help to keep some of those available for the, for the people who come and go, especially so that the people employed by the, the various providers don't monopolize those spaces. Michael, do you have any other comments about that? You're involved with the ongoing discussion?
I don't really have anything further to add.
Yeah, okay. But it's, it's basically an ongoing discussion. It's not, it's not a proposal at this point.
Okay, thank you, Joel.
Oh, the, the next meeting of the Transportation Commission will be the, the second Tuesday of next month, which I believe is the twelfth. It'll be in this room from four to six.
Okay, thank you. The next point in our agenda is called Open Microphone, and it's an opportunity for members of the public to speak to the commission regarding matters that are not on the agenda, nor currently pending before planning and zoning. Please, if anyone wishes to speak during this time, please state your name and address for the record and limit your remarks to three minutes. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in this category? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item six, the first public hearing, and Mike is going to introduce the topic.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair, members of the commission. Before you tonight, we have an application in the Area City Impact for a rezoning, twenty-seven ten Highway ninety-five. And the proposal before you is the rezoning of a twenty thousand five hundred square-foot parcel located at South Highway ninety-five, and they're proposing rezoning it from the agricultural forestry to the motor business zone. And per the Area City Impact Agreement, the commission reviews the matter, conducts a public hearing, and then forwards the recommendation on to Leitau County for their final decision. So taking a look at the, the property at the center of your screen, highlighted in red, little closer view, we have an old gas station, circular in shape, that was recently torn down over the last year or two. This would be the Germer Construction Offices here, and this would be Wasson Carey's recycling, recycled building supply lot there. And you have Monday's Welding up here to the northwest of the property. As the Leitau County hasn't adopted our two thousand and nine comprehensive plan, taking a look at the nineteen ninety-nine comprehensive plan, that whole area on the east side of ninety-five is currently designated as industrial. Looking at the two thousand and nine comp plan, that would be auto-urban commercial in the pink designation there. So what those mean, the nineteen ninety-nine comp plan for industrial, doesn't give a whole lot of information, other than those areas are the best located within the city for highway transport between Moscow and Lewiston, and they'd be appropriate for general industry and warehousing operations. What the two thousand and nine comp plan says about the auto-urban commercial designation is that they should be adjacent to existing commercial development, as well as being located along major arterias where vehicle traffic can be accommodated, so in this case ninety-five. Such areas are most appropriately zoned motor business, which would be the proposal. So looking at the current zoning configuration of that area and the Area City Impact, we have the wide swath there on the east side of ninety-five that's currently within the motor business zone, so Germer Construction, the cleaned-up gas station property, and Monday's Welding and Fabrication currently in the motor business zone. And then you have agricultural forestry in the green, which extends, pretty much encompasses the entire property. There's a little bit of motor business on the western portion of the subject property. And then you have Wasson Carey Building Supply down there to the south, which is currently designated as industrial. The proposal would be to rezone from motor bus, or from agricultural forestry to the motor business zone, so just extend the current zone to the east on the subject property. Looking at what the zoning code says, the purpose of the motor business zone, provide for location and grouping of compatible uses, having similar operation as they involve enterprises which depend primarily on the transient motor-vehicle-based trade. By concentrating such users, the city intends to increase public convenience when utilizing such services, and within the regulation to allow activities to render the maximum service. Motor business, you know, offers a wide variety of uses, mainly commercial, although it does allow for some residential uses. The majority of the commercial include retail, professional offices, repair shops, restaurants, off-street parking facilities, hotel motels, kennels, laundromats, as well as self-service storage facilities and RV parks. Pretty simple. Staff's recommendation tonight is that the, the commission conduct a public hearing and put forth a recommendation of approval to Leitau County for the proposed rezone from ag forest to motor business with no conditions. I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions from commissioners? Yes, Joel.
How does this relate to possible impacts of the Highway ninety-five realignment? Should, should that move forward?
I had that same question, yeah.
Well, I think the, the western and the eastern alignment, which are still up in consideration, would both come in south of Prime Land. So it would come over the ridge here and end up connecting there. In turn, this would probably just become a, you know, I don't know if the, the state would give up authority on this road, it may just become a county road, but I'm sure ITD would still maintain authority of it in some manner.
But the likely right-of-way for, say, the eastern alignment would, would not intersect with the proposed rezone?
It wouldn't. You know, the, the land ends up increasing in elevation as you head to the east there, so they'd have to stay up on this ridge and then come down into the south end of Prime Land there for the proposed alignment.
Just a follow-up question, Mike. Why is it so much in doubt that we're not showing, why aren't we showing that proposal line right now on, on our maps? What, I'm, when are, when's that gonna happen, that we will start to see a right-of-way that is the new line? I mean, it's gonna go right behind Wasson Carey's, I know, and slide in, but you'd think we'd know where the line is now.
Well, I, I think that they're still finalizing that. I think that they haven't decided on the western or the eastern. I think they've, and they've, all the environmental-
Decided on which side of the, of the one that they're gonna do, but not exactly how it runs into the existing ninety-five.
Well, I, I think they have the general alignment figured out, but they had just finished going through all the environmental impact assessments and statements that, that were required as part of that. I think when it starts to become within our plans is when it's adopted by ITD, and then we can incorporate that into our comprehensive plan, thoroughfare plan, and so at that-
I thought it was eminent, so that's why we just, we keep getting little things in the mail that says, "Yeah, we know what we're doing."
It's on the final stage of that, but it's not final, yeah.
Other questions for Mike? Okay, so I guess-
I guess, my only other question on the piece of land is, we don't see, are those black lines ownership lines, do you think?
Yeah, they'd be parcel boundaries, yep.
And so they're just, could be purchasing a piece of land from this and that, huh?
Yeah, it'd be the purchaser, I think Wasson Carey owns this piece here, so they'd be purchasing a hundred-by-hundred piece from them, and then the Clides own this property here, so they'd be purchasing a hundred-by-hundred piece from that.
Yeah, thanks.
No, that's okay, any others? Okay, well, I, I guess at this point, we'll open up the public hearing, and first hear from the applicant, if the applicant's, hello.
Hi, I'm Scott Becker with Hodgins Associates, four oh five, South Washington. I just wanted to thank Mike for the presentation. He covered all the, all the points that I had. Larry Germer is the, the developer, the owner of that property. He doesn't really have a plan yet as to what he wants to do with it, but the first step is to, to get it rezoned, so if you have any questions, I would gladly answer them, otherwise I won't waste your time.
Anybody? All right, I guess.
So he's just gonna do something with it, he just doesn't know what yet?
He, he's not sure yet, you know, it ties into the property that, that he already has there with the, his office, so it, I'm not sure which one it is. Uh, yeah, so the office there, and it extends down, his lot extends down through that circular area where the gas station was.
So that's his access?
Yeah, that's his access.
Yes.
Probably doesn't really matter, but it seems odd that it's just perched out there instead of being abutted up against the other southern line. I don't know, just, it looks odd, why?
And, and the reason is, if you go out there right now, you can kind of see where Wasson Carey is, has done some construction out there, and has already kind of moved into that spot.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I agree, because it's like, oh, is this spot zoning when it's just kind of, you're close.
Right, it, it does look a little bit funny, but it, if you look at it from the highway, it, it really makes more sense.
Okay.
Okay, other questions for Scott? All right, thank you. So, any other members of the public who would like to speak in favor of the, the proposal? Are there any members of the public who would like to speak against the proposal or make comments of a general nature? All right, I guess, hearing none, we will close the, the public hearing, public portion of the hearing, and go to an internal discussion. Anybody have any comments or questions further?
Well, no, I would just be scared of what was going in there, not knowing, but there's no one here, no one here to, that it seems to bother, so I don't guess it'll bother me then.
If it was a bigger piece of land, you might, but I can, you can just imagine, as soon, Mr. Wasson Carey will have taken over every bit of the world that he owns, and as he's multiplying his salvage yard, so I don't know, it doesn't look like there's too much of an issue with it.
Well, it said somewhere, storage, but, yeah. Rob?
Well, I, and I heard that too, and I was, had thought about the same thing earlier, but with the motor business zoning, it's, it's fairly restrictive in a, in a sense. I mean, it isn't like you can have some industrial complex there, because it's gonna be, if, once it's zoned motor business, it's gonna be basically restricted to that-
Those listed items that was-
The listed that Mike had on his presentation, which didn't seem to be, to me, to, to be too risky with respect to what could or would go out there.
Is that correct, that it's within the list, and it would have to stay within the list that you?
Yeah, it would just be all the, the listed uses within the motor business zone. They're gonna be limited because there's no water sewer out here, so anything that they do would have to be a low, you, you know, they have to drill a new well or septic system in order to-
Do they not have, the, but the-
Infrastructure.
People along the highway are, are on, septic, they're on septic systems?
Correct.
Okay.
And it is just a recommendation, too, to the county, right? That's all it is.
Right, just the area impacted, yeah. Joel?
Well, basically, I was gonna say, it's, the motor business designation makes sense to me, it's consistent with the neighborhood, so it's basically just a extension of the, of the, of the current uses, so I'm comfortable with the proposal.
I guess I am too, because it's along a transportation corridor, no matter what its future is, it's still in a sort of established commercial corridor, so it seems like the best place to, to locate whatever it's gonna be, if it's within the, that, the allowance of the zoning. Okay, well, should, do we have a motion?
I, I move that we, and I, I guess this is a recommendation to the county commission, that, that we recommend the rezone of the subject property from ag forestry to motor business zone.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so at this point, we should direct staff to prepare relevant criteria, come back to us. All right, so that concludes public hearing number one, or do I, did I leave something out?
Can we just get a motion to-
Oh, oh, to direct staff.
For the relevant criteria, please?
Oh, yeah.
I'll move to direct staff to do all the hard work.
Okay, is there a second? 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 All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so staff will prepare relevant criteria. So now we move on to the second public hearing, and Mike will, Mike Ray will open up the session.
Thank you. The, the next item is a concerning, a comprehensive plan, land use designation, as well as the rezoning for some property that's proposed to be annexed into the city of Moscow, and it's located directly east of Mountain View Park, consists of thirty acres. So it has three components. The comp plan designation would be one component, but the annexation of the thirty acres would be one aspect that the city council is, is gonna end up reviewing. Planning and zoning commission doesn't make a recommendation on annexation, just the comp plan designation, as well as the rezoning. So we're gonna look at comp plan designation, and it's currently designated as auto-urban residential within the Area City Impact. The rezone would be from the agricultural forestry zone to the R-two zone, which is the moderate-density, single-family residential zone within the code. So just to orient yourself to the property, it's highlighted in red at the center of your screen. You have F Street running east-west, down here in the southwest corner, this would be Mountain View Park. You have Mountain View Road heading east, and then directly to the north here, makes a ninety-degree turn. You also have just various other residential, primarily single-family residential development in the Truman Ford area here. You also have Good Samaritan development here to the, the southwest, and then you have agricultural fields pretty much to the north, east, and to the south. Looking at topography map of the area, as well as a floodplain map, you've got Paradise Creek that ends up transecting the property in the northwest corner, as well as that western edge, southwestern edge. The shaded blue area on your screen is the hundred-year floodplain, and so that encompasses Paradise Creek, and also extends onto the property. The, the contour lines that you see there represent two-foot elevation change, so property's relatively flat. There is a little bit of elevation gain when you head to the southeast corner of the property, but not much. Looking at the comp plan designation, currently designated as auto-urban residential, as well as the properties to the northwest, north, directly to the east, as well as to the south. Mountain View Park's currently designated as parks and open space, being a city park. And then you have the existing single-family R-two neighborhood to the west of that, that's currently designated as neighborhood conservation, because it's a developed area. What the auto-urban residential designation says in our two thousand and nine comp plan, it's usually intended for moderate, low to moderate density. We usually have commonly observed densities of about three to seven units per acre, and then it points to appropriate zoning, which would be the R-one, which is our low-density, single-family zone, R-two, which is moderate, and then R-three, which is the medium-density zone. Looking at the current designation, zoning designation is ag forest, as well as the property to the north, directly to the east and to the south. Mountain View Park's currently designated as farm ranch. You have the residential neighborhood there to the southwest, which is designated as R-two, moderate-density zone. Good Samaritan would be R-four here, and then we have some areas located in the Area City Impact here, that, I believe it's a suburban residential zone. The proposal would be to rezone it to R-two, moderate-density residential. Usually, the, the newer areas that are being annexed into the city that are developed with subdivisions are similar to, you know, these areas here, Rolling Hills, Indian Hills are almost always zoned R-two, so it'd be consistent with the, the further expansion adjacent to the city limits. What the R-two zone is identified within our zoning code, what that says is that it's appropriately applied in a few different circumstances. One, where single-family dwellings predominate the area, terrain's not harshly irregular, and smaller lot sizes can be accommodated without having to do extensive earthwork. Utilities and other public facilities are adequate for the densities, and then the existing law development patterns and policies embedded in the comprehensive plan also guide the application of that zone. Wanted to highlight the, the utilities in the area. The closest sanitary sewer and water mains that we have are located in F Street here, as well as D Street down here to the south. We do have a water line that extends up to Mountain View Park, which could be used as the looping of a system for some future development of that property. Wanted to highlight our thoroughfare plan. So this is the thoroughfare plan within the comprehensive plan that identifies all of our roadway designations and plans for future roadways for undeveloped property. It's currently showing F Street as being a collector. It's proposed to extend onto the Reingans property, and then head north, the blue dash line is a proposed future arterial, and so Mountain View Road's currently designated as an arterial, will end up connecting F Street, D Street, with Mountain View Road through that property. Taking a look at our existing utility systems, like I had mentioned before, for our water system, we have existing mains in D and F. Our two thousand and twelve comprehensive water system plan has identified, Engineering Department, Public Works has run the modeling for this property, and they've determined that the existing system has adequate potable and fire flows to serve any future development that may occur on the property. Looking at the sanitary sewer system, once again, we have some mains in D and F Street. It's likely that the, these will be extended off D Street, because you don't have to cross Paradise Creek that way, and it's hard to get gravity across the creek, you'd have to end up with some type of lift station there. So, looking at our two thousand and eleven comprehensive sewer system plan, Engineering's done the modeling on this as well for this, any future development of this property, and they've determined that it's adequate to serve the additional flow that could be generated by any of the potential uses that are allowed in the R-two zone. And then our storm sewer system, our stormwater regulations would just require that the stormwater be detained and then conveyed on-site, and it ends up being conveyed to Paradise Creek, which is our stormwater conveyance channel through the city of Moscow. So with that, staff recommends the commission conduct a public hearing, and upon consideration of any public testimony received, recommend approval of the AUR land use designation and the rezone from agricultural forestry to moderate-density, single-family residential to the city council.
Are there any questions for Mike Ray? Yes.
Yep. So, in looking at whether the utilities are adequate, they were looking at a school and whatever potential size that school could be, and that the existing facilities are adequate?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, Rob?
Mike, on the transportation plan, where there is at least indicated to be a future, what did you call it, collector through the property?
Dash blue line?
Arterial. Arterial. So if the property then is developed otherwise, that eliminates that as a potential future route? Is that, I mean, there's no right-of-way associated with that at this point, is there?
No, no, and this is for, you know, anytime we have new subdivisions or any other type of larger development, they usually have to go through some type of public hearing process, and so if the, the end application ends up being a school on this property, they'd have to go through a conditional use permit process, and it'd be at that point where the orientation of the roadway and any improvements to the roadway would be imposed, but being an arterial classification on the thoroughfare plan, they would just have to have a roadway and a general alignment of our comprehensive plan. It doesn't have to be specifically where that dash line is, but they would need a roadway connection, and it would have to be developed to our arterial standards of our city code.
Okay, so, so that's still in effect?
Correct, yeah. Regardless of what gets developed there, a road would need to be built from the southern edge to connect to the property to the south, and likely end up with a roundabout on the intersection of Mountain View Road.
Okay, good, thanks.
What about the extra traffic on Mountain View?
This is only zoning in comprehensive plan, so there's no school proposal before the commission tonight, so we're just looking, taking a look at comprehensive plan and whether or not the, the rezoning of the property is consistent with a comprehensive plan. That'll be a conditional use permit later on, which will address all traffic, you know, noise nuisance-type issues.
I did have a question, is it seems like the land is somewhat landlocked, because it doesn't really touch directly on the Mountain View, correct? Right now? So what happens in that circumstance if we're not, you know, in terms of access to it?
Yeah, there's usually easements that, that the highway district owns across those for public rights away, and so they're able to get a, we've already modeled that, and so where they're able to get a full roundabout there at that intersection.
But isn't that what the dotted blue line is suggesting, that it won't be landlocked? That there will be, in fact, a need to-
Connect it, yeah. And that was, that was kind of my question, is, does that come with the, the package somehow? Yeah.
I had a question for Mike.
Greg?
This is, this is a proposal to adopt the comprehensive plan- This is a proposal to adopt the comprehensive plan if this is annexed, and there's something in the materials about amending the comprehensive plan, but this doesn't require an amendment to the comprehensive plan, correct?
Yeah, it's not technically an amendment. It would just be correct. And we have it in the area of city impact, it's auto-urban residential. Once you annex into the city, you're required to adopt or change that comprehensive plan designation. And in this circumstance, we would just recommend adopting the current auto-urban residential designation for the property. So it's not really amending, but oftentimes with our criteria, we would call it an amendment.
Okay.
But it's not really per se, it'd just be adopting what's currently there.
Technically amending it?
Yeah.
Right now, it doesn't fall directly under our comprehensive plan, and it would be...
Just remind us, when it's an annexation, it doesn't go to the county? Or if it was some other thing, it would go to...remind us what happens? It's in the area of impact, right?
In the area of impact, yeah.
And so are we talking to the county about this? Or are we saying we can annex it?
No, it would just be our normal process. And so it goes to the commission, the commission makes a recommendation on a city council, and then city council has the authority under state code to annex property into the city. And so Planning and Zoning Commission won't make a recommendation on whether or not it should be annexed. It's just whether, make a recommendation on if the city council were to annex it, what would be the appropriate comprehensive plan land use designation, and what would be the appropriate zone. And that's what you're charged with.
Mike, so what happens if it...so we make the recommendation to city council for the comprehensive plan change and the zone change, and then council decides not to move forward with annexing the property, then what happens to the recommendations or the changes that we've made? Do they just become moot?
Yeah, you just make a recommendation. You would direct staff for the relevant criterion standards, but they would be essentially reversing that decision and develop their own relevant criterion standards. So you'd still have the chain moving, you know, the approval chain, but it would just end with city council.
Other commissioner questions for Mike? Okay, well, at this point, I guess we'll open up the public hearing and invite members of the audience to come up and speak and state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes, and we'll start with the applicant, please. Scott, representing the applicant, okay.
You're so popular.
Yeah.
Yeah, Scott Becker with Hodgins Associates, 405 South Washington. Once again, Mike's done all the heavy lifting. Really, it just, you know, we're just here to get the annexation, or not the annexation, but the comp plan designation and the rezone tonight. And it just seems to make sense where that property lies, to be rezoned as R2, and that's why we decided to go with the R2 designation. So if you guys have any questions, I can gladly answer them.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Becker? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, are there members of the audience who'd like to speak in favor of the proposal? Are there members of the audience who would like to speak in oppos...oh, go ahead. Oh, you are in favor, okay. Yeah, sorry, yeah.
Name and address, all that stuff. My name's Darrell Faircloth. I have the pleasure of living at 818 Ford Street, which has a great view right across that field. I don't want to say I'm against or for. I just want to note that I appreciate all the information that's being presented. My concerns are, is the floodplain, we are in a flood zone, we, you know, my spouse and I pay flood insurance, so whatever development's done over on that side of the property, hopefully that's all taken into context in terms of how the property's developed. I do like the blue line where it is now. What we've seen at a previous informational meeting was pretty much a road running straight down, the yellow, the red line going north and south, so very close to the creek and how that might impact everything. Reading the zoning requirements, I understand everything has to go through a CUP process if it is going to be a school, church, that kind of a development, which is fine. And then also reading the R2 zoning requirements, you know, I knew a long time ago it's going to get developed, you know, we're not going to have our brilliant backyard forever, but I just hope the development is, you know, as whoever, you know, owns this and starts developing it considers the contours. It is a big bog out there, there's going to be a lot of, I don't know, it stays wet a long time of the, you know, most of the year, so. And then other than that, the arterial, again, I'd just like to say that looks a lot better than what I saw in the other thing, and I guess that's all I have to say right now.
Thank you, Darrell. Other members of the public like to speak? Please.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Arthur Anthony Driver. My friends call me Tony, Tony, it's the Anthony part. I live at 2322 Concord Street, and my property abuts Mountain View Park. I'm the very last house on Concord. If you see the 45-degree turn there into Ford Street, my next-door neighbor's actually on Ford Street. I want to disagree respectfully with the assessment by our folks from our planning department about utility adequacy for an R2 zoning in that area. Where we live, we're basically at the end of the pipe, and already in summertime, in places of high-use water times, we have very low pressure, and we have called city many times about low water pressure in that area. They come out and flush something, and then we end up with four or five days of brownwater. And so there is a problem in that area, and I personally do not feel that that area is appropriate for an R2 zoning based upon utility consumption of water and sewer for what you would call a real R2 zone. Now, however, a few weeks ago, our community was invited to Logo School to participate in a presentation on the concepts for that property, a Living Faith Fellowship invited in behalf of Logo School. The community, we received letters, people showed up, and presentation was made. The intent, as I understand it and as was presented, is that that property will be utilized to build a new Logo School. And the R2 zoning then implies, in my opinion, that there could be other designs on further development in the area. Thirty acres is a very large compound for a school, and so there may be other things there. I'm concerned from an economic point of view, behalf of the city and our community, I just have a couple of comments, and I need my glasses to see my notes, excuse me. Living Faith Fellowship and Logo School is organized as a 503(c) corporation in terms of income tax, and so they don't pay income tax as a church or not-for-profit organization. They have also applied in the past, and no doubt will apply again in future, under county board, Leito County Board of Commissions' adopted ordinance number 265, and under Idaho Code 63-602B for relief of property tax afforded to churches, schools, and other not-for-profit organizations that qualify according to the code, of which Logo School and Living Faith Fellowship certainly does qualify. So having said that, I want to tell our commission for the record, I'm going to begin the opposition process that no doubt will carry forward through a lot of layers in our community, that the opposition is primarily economical because the, no doubt, our city ordinances and our requirements for subdivision in terms of development of a property recently annexed and rezoned to R2, should development occur there, confidence is that updates to a sewer and water delivery system and updates to other forms of infrastructure will be included and mandated by ordinance in that type of a development. So the confidence is there. Confidence is also there that should we go further down the road, and actually facility is there, a school is in place, as an example, utilization of water and sewer will pay a utility bill to the city. And so the utility bills, like all other property owners, are designed to not only account for the utilization of the commodity, in this case, water, but also to accommodate maintenance and things of that nature as it should occur. So the concern goes even one step further, and that is this. The city of Moscow on its narrative to the FY 2016 budget states that the general fund, which is the major source of all funds that the city utilizes, because all funds go in and out of the general fund, as you know, the revenue of the general fund's primary source is property tax, and the numbers are given there of the code. And it further says that Idaho law allows for local government to increase property tax revenues a maximum of 3%. So there can only be increased 3% above the previous year's tax levy, in addition to any annexations and new construction occurring within the past year. So if there's an annexation or a construction, no doubt, our city council and planners will take that into consideration. But however, the exemption comes to an estimated $5.06 per $1,000 of assessed valuation of that land. Thirty acres, $5.06 per $1,000 of assessed valuation is a sizable sum of money. That money is used primarily for the maintenance of Mountain View Road, the creation and maintenance of sidewalks and access, and all of those kinds of things that may occur around the corner above the Hamilton Recreation Center, where it turns there as a 90-degree, all the way down to that property corner, where it turns its 90 degrees, then going north again. That funding will lie on the backs of the citizens of our fair city who do pay property tax and who do pay income tax. And so for those reasons, Madam Chairperson and members of the commission, I stand strongly in opposition and request that you do so as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public would like to speak? Yes. Well, could you come to the podium, please? And just state your name and address, please.
My name is Jerry Hudak, and I live at 830 Ford Street. And I'm just a little confused about a couple of things. So if that property is zoned ag forestry, is, can nothing be built on it under that zoning? I think still...
Well, only the structures that are allowed under ag forestry, which would include some, you know, could be some house, housing and farm buildings, et cetera.
What I saw online, tried to look up, it did say like a church or a school could be built on that as ag forestry.
That, I would have to defer to Mike, is that true?
Correct, yeah. In the ag forest zone in the area of city impact, you'd be able to go through the same process, conditional use permit process. The issue is, when the property's annexed into the city, we want to have it consistent with the comp plan designation. And so the comp plan designation would point to either R1, R2, or R3. So we would recommend it being rezoned to one of those designations. And so in this case, since it's being annexed, that we recommend it being rezoned to R2. You know, if it was in the area of city impact and it remained there, it wouldn't be connected to city services. So you'd have this big user of water and septic, and they wouldn't be paying any city services, you know, rates, and they would just be out in the county.
So just let me make sure I understand. So if it were annexed into the city but remained ag forestry, it could not have city sewer, city water?
Well, it wouldn't be able to remain ag forest because it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan determines what the proper zoning designation would be upon annexation to the city.
So that does require the R2?
R1, R2, R3.
Right. Okay. That I wanted to understand, I wasn't sure about that. I was a little concerned that perhaps the buyer of the property felt that the property, if they can't, it is Logo School, and they're trying to raise enough money to build the school? And I was just concerned that if they couldn't raise the money, did they want this rezoning so that the resale value of the property might be greater? But apparently, they just want the rezoning so that they can be annexed into the city and meet with the city's comprehensive plan.
I don't know if I can answer that. I mean, we're just...
Yeah, that's, I'm, yeah, okay. So then I'm kind of just in the same boat as Tony and Darrell. You know, we live on that property, we've enjoyed that view for a long time, and I just wish it could stay ag forestry, and that we could appreciate the value, not underestimate the value of a good view. And it's not just my view and their view, it's all the people that use Mountain View Park, and it's open space, and it's viable farmland, it's productive farmland. So I just want to make my concern for the loss of that noted. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public who wish to speak? I guess, also, this is an, is there no one else who would like to speak? It's an opportunity, I guess, for the applicant to come back, and if you have any comments you'd like to make in response to the comments that have been made. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I do have a, some comments that were, I received via email.
Oh, okay. Why don't you go ahead and read those then? Thank you, Mike.
Are these just one or two, or are there several, Mike?
It's just one, so just take one and pass it along.
Thanks.
So what happens in this case? Should somebody read it, or...
Just read it into the record.
Pardon me?
Just read it into the record.
Okay. You want me to do it? Yep, okay. Dear Councilman, I would like to, this comes from Connie Benson, Moscow Mountain Road, Moscow. I would like to express my concerns about the proposed rezoning of the 30 acres on Mountain View Road adjoining Mountain View Park. One, rezoning of this property to allow for a school and/or medium-density housing will result in a substantial increase in traffic on this road. It will have a significant impact on Mountain View as well as on streets leading to Mountain View. Two, Mountain View Road narrows past Public Avenue, where it turns the corner to run east and west and other, other than a small trip before Slonaker Drive, there are no sidewalks for pedestrians nor a bike lane for bicyclists. It is already a safety concern and will increase as traffic increases. Three, Mountain View is a farm-to-market road. If the property is rezoned and the proposed roundabout is put in place, consideration should be given to the traffic currently using the road. Farm machinery of all types, grain trucks, semis used for hauling grain, fuel tankers, not to mention road graders and other equipment needed by the county to maintain county roads, use this road to travel to and from town. Four, who will foot the bill for any modifications needed for the road if the rezone goes through? Thank you for considering my input, Connie Benson. Okay. So at this point, I guess, is that the, that's the total correspondence related? At this point, if no one else has any comments to make, I think we'll close the public portion of the hearing and open to internal discussion among the commission. Anybody have any questions or comments? Yep.
Gosh, you would think after nine years that this would have come up before, but I can't remember a time where we were asked, in my time on the commission, to rezone a piece of property before it was annexed into the city. Somehow, to me, that seems backwards.
It's usually concurrently. So it'll happen at the same time, city council annexes it at the same time that they approve the rezone or, and comp plan resolution.
Okay.
So it all happens at once.
Those two things happen at one time.
Yeah, it's just that the Planning and Zoning Commission... Yeah, it's just that the Planning and Zoning Commission doesn't make a recommendation just because state code says that council has the authority and there isn't a recommendation process for planning.
For annexation.
Yeah, for annexation. It's only the rezone and the comp plan.
Okay.
But it will all happen at the same time at city council level.
Okay.
Other comments? Well, I know I've looked at that piece of property for a long time and wished the city would annex it as an addition to Mountain View Park, but that has not happened, because I think it would have been a very logical extension of Mountain View Park. For many of the reasons mentioned, it is a pretty low-lying, I know Mountain View Park floods quite a bit in the spring and season. But since that's not part of the comprehensive park plan, I can't really push that agenda. Other, are there other comments? Or questions?
A comment about, from my point of view, about the area and growth in Moscow. There are some places where Moscow's gonna grow, and it has, I hope, we're not just gonna recede into the oblivion. And there's some parts of the city, we have a more industrial part. America has typically often gone to the north, or to the east and north. It's, it's, so the folks that are worried about it, in my mind, I think within the next 20 years, there'll be a couple thousand houses out there regardless of what anyone, any of us like to think. So it's a fairly natural growth pattern, and whether we don't, we just presume from the owner that, and we've heard in the newspaper that they're talking about schools, so it's a little strange to come to us, as is official thing as R2, but it certainly does make sense in whether, whether the lines, water, and sewer are currently up to speed, they will certainly have to be up to speed in due time. I mean, there's just no way around it. And of course, Mountain View Road is liable to be a much more busy road in another 10 or 15 years than we imagine it today. So it seems like a natural move to, to me, whether it's, I can't imagine, of course, we expect everyone, and those of you who are here tonight who've been enjoying watching the meadow larks all these years, you just have to get over that. That's an issue that all of us on the edge of the city, wherever we are, have to realize that that's where the city will, will, will grow. So I just, in general, just as a broad issue, I think that it certainly makes a sense. And R2, I suppose, is a middle-of-the-road, gives more options than R1 or R... It seems logical that we do R2, I suppose, often.
Yeah, the majority of the newer subdivisions, if they're primarily single-family and have relatively, you know, moderate to large lots, are R2.
So anyway, given that, it's, would be difficult for me to see any reason why a legitimate owner wouldn't, couldn't do this with, it seems like, a sensible move for the city.
Yeah, it's on the edge.
I don't understand, excuse me, I'll just finish. I don't understand the tax thing that was brought up. That isn't before us, but that being, so I don't know what that is. But clearly, I think we'll see, we'll see similar developments like those on Eisenhower and Ford and whatever. And the park is nicely in place, and we'll see houses out there in due, in due time.
Let's see, so, Joel?
Well, I, I too think that the, the proposal makes sense. Any actual development of this property is going to require some additional steps. A, a school or a church is a conditional use in R2, so that would require an additional public process to obtain the conditional use. And that would, would involve discussion of access and whether the property is being properly served by utilities and streets and so on. Development for residences, which is not being proposed, as I understand, but develop, just to talk about that, would require a subdivision proposal, which would be a public process, which should come before us, and would also certainly involve discussion of access and utilities. So, you know, if we approve this proposal before us, we're not, we're not specifically approving residences. We're not, we're not approving a school or a church. Any such uses would, would require additional steps. So what's before us is basically the question of whether the proposed comprehensive plan is appropriate should the city council choose to annex it, and whether the R2 zone is appropriate should the city council choose to annex it. And on balance, I agree. The issue of tax-exempt status is not before us.
Yeah, it's on the edge of town. We just, being up here on this panel, that's what you go through a lot, is growth on the edge of town. While we empathize, I'm going through it in my neighborhood, I'm getting my view changed, but it is happening. It's unfortunate that it happens, but it's, it's where growth, like Neil said, that's the best place to grow is on the edge of town, and it's just not gonna last forever. You know, mine didn't either, and, but hopefully, you know, as far as the water and the public works have went out there and they've done their job, hopefully, and if they'll get things ironed out, if there is, I'm sure with that much more demand, there's gonna be something that's gonna have to be done. If in fact there is low pressure, they're gonna, they'll have to do something to fix that. That's not gonna fly. The taxes, that's a big thing to me, but that's, that's way beyond us. It's, that's another unfortunate, but that's, that's, that's way higher than us. So I see no reason why, any reason to hold it up either.
I guess one question that arises in my mind is I remember the days when Mountain View closer in town didn't have, had a lot of use with no sidewalks. And so I guess I, I see as Mountain View continues to progress and attract development, and we allow it without sidewalks along it, what, where, who's gonna pay for that? You know, it's gonna, I guess that goes, that is a concern that I would have here. And I don't know, I don't know the answer to that question, but I do have a concern about it, because I think it's tragic when we allow expansion without connectivity. If we're trying to connect to the edge of town, development contiguous to the edge of town, and we don't extend the infrastructure, including sidewalks, then who pays for it? So I don't know, Mike, do you have any?
Well, it all depends on the end user. You know, it may not be the school, it may be the school. We've run some preliminary calculations as to what is needed for improvement to the roadway network, and on Mountain View, it's a widening of the roadway on one side in order to accommodate two 12-foot-wide travel lanes.
What about people on foot?
As well as sidewalks on one side of the street. Haven't determined whether or not that's gonna be the north or the south. The north would connect to Sloniker. There's a sidewalk on Mountain View right in front of Sloniker. Or sidewalk on the south would connect to Mountain View Park. So you've gotta kind of weigh those two options. And so that'll all be worked through, as well as the roundabout at the intersection of Mountain View, and then the future arterial that comes up from the property. That'll all be worked out when there's an actual proposal underneath that zoning. So when a school submits a conditional use permit, that'll all be reviewed and then, you know, required as conditions as part of that conditional use permit.
Because that is a, having run that loop down Mountain View and around Trail Road probably a thousand times in my life, it's a, that's a dangerous curve right there. And it does, it does bring, the planning of it is critical. I mean, you know, how that's addressed. And it's hard to think about development without thinking about the traffic and the infrastructure.
Well, I guess we could say that one of the dilemmas that we face always is having to have faith that we will develop our city in large enough patches that will have responsible street systems. And as one of the, one of the, so even though it's not before us, it's, it's an issue that kind of hovers. One of the elephants in the room is knowing that this piece of land is somewhat landlocked in the sense that it's up against a park, it's got a crick running by part of it, it doesn't have a street, and so you do wonder, well, how beautiful is it gonna be? How's a system that's gonna support the next development, whether it's 30 or 50 or 100 acres? How is that going to be done? And, you know, we, I realize this is just pontificating a bit about how we plan.
Right. We can't just lay it out so it makes sense if it's happening episodically.
We watched in the history of mankind, we've seen a few cities that have decided, we're gonna develop this way, and they throw grit out there, and that's the way it was gonna be. But we don't do it that way, so it takes some faith. And we can count on Scott to be really brilliant in the next years, because he's liable to do some of that development. But anyway, those are the kind of questions that I think are all, that we're all interested in. Wish we knew how a piece of, this, this piece of land could be connected to the city responsibly, and we're not sure how that'll happen, but we have to have some faith that somehow our staff and our engineers and our architects in the city will, and then even a few owners will have some care about how the city develops. But I think that's outside of our choice tonight, but it does make you go home and be sleepless for a few minutes.
Deb?
Well, piggybacking on that, I don't think we can always have faith, because Orchard Avenue is a good example of where we, we have not updated the infrastructure of the street to accommodate all the building that has happened on, north on Orchard. So...
Polk, think about Polk.
And Polk, too. Polk is a terrible example.
No, I understand, that's why I use the word faith.
I'm not sure I always have a lot of faith.
It's hard.
And I don't know where the dilemma lies, that we aren't able to do those things. But this is just a very generic question. The public hearing that we had for the new development that is being planned west of Sloniker, the people that were living there were concerned about the wetlands, and I know this is really wet, but none of the, at least the one west of Sloniker, didn't qualify in terms of any, I don't know, EPA or what, what department determines wetland status, but that one had not, according to Scott. Is there anything that a community can do that if they say, well, yeah, maybe this, this federal organization has said that it's not wetlands, but can a city or a county say, well, we disagree, and we have, we, we're gonna reserve the right to call something a wetlands? And I'm not saying that this piece of property is or isn't, but just a generic question. Are we able, as a community, to make a determination like that?
I don't think so.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, the city's always able to preserve, you know, whatever they see as a benefit to the community. So if we had a local wetlands ordinance, I don't know that it would trump the Army Corps of Engineers, who is in charge of all the wetlands within the United States. But you can certainly preserve whatever you want to preserve as a, as a community, and, you know, you'd have to have an ordinance within the city code which preserved those areas, and a good, sound reasoning behind why you needed to have those areas preserved. But, you know, it just comes with the topography of the area. You're gonna have rolling hills, and you're gonna have low-lying areas that are saturated with water at certain times of the year, being this close of proximity to Paradise Creek. The ground's just gonna be wet, and you're always gonna have channels, as you can see that here, you know, that run all over the land, just because they're low-lying areas, you know, that all end up running, flowing into Paradise Creek. And we just have to rely on our stormwater management practices in order to convey that and, you know, preserve the areas that are more substantial channels and riparian areas for recreating and preserving those view sheds. So I, you know, but the answer to your question is, yeah, we could certainly...
But we don't, right? At this point, we don't have any...
We don't, yeah. It's up to the Army Corps of Engineers in order to regulate jurisdictional wetlands. And so they determine whether or not they have jurisdiction over a piece of water or body of water, and then they have the authority, and you'd have to go through their process and, but that's not to say that even if it was declared a wetland through the permitting system, as long as you mitigate those in some way, you're able to develop over them. It just doesn't say that those are protected. You're, you have oftentimes a wide variety of options in order to mitigate maybe developed, you know, the wetlands that you're ending up developing over, so.
Thank you, Mike. Other questions? Yes, Rob?
Well, maybe not so much a question, but one more comment. We're dealing with a lot of ifs, that we don't know. There's several different potentials here, and from everything that I'm hearing, R2 makes the most sense, given all of the various potentials that we're dealing with. So it seems to me that a change of the comprehensive plan and a rezone to R2 is appropriate under the circumstances.
If the city council decides to annex it.
If they annex it, and I would move that we go ahead and approve the change of the comprehensive plan and the rezone to R2. Do I need to do that as two second?
Is that stated the way it should be exactly?
Sounds like a motion to me.
Okay, yeah. I just want to make sure we, it's a, applying the land use change, right? I mean, you know, okay, never mind. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, I guess we will now, I guess I need somebody to direct staff to prepare relevant criteria and make a motion.
I move that we direct staff to prepare the relevant criteria for the, to support the recommendation we're making.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Okay, so Mike, you will come back with us, to us with those. And we thank you for attending. I guess that concludes the meeting unless we have one more, I guess, one more item, which is the potential for the field trip we talked about, to go see parking lots. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Is proposed for May 25th to go do that?
No, it was proposed for May, May 11th.
Well, we're gonna wait and see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, yeah. Yes. Okay.
So I guess, you know, we could have a couple of different options. We could go on a field trip, maybe start the meeting an hour early or an hour and a half early, and then we could all load up in the Parks and Rec van and go out and tour maybe four parking lots to take a look at those. I think we've got maybe David Rock with the Tree Commission to come along. I think we've got maybe David Rock with the Tree Commission to come along to provide some expert professional opinion as to, you know, whether or not different types of plantings work and, and different scenarios. He could be able to do that. Or I guess the, the second option would be that we just, I can go out and take a bunch of pictures of all the parking lots and then we could have that same discussion here in council chambers and we could have David here as well to talk about that. And so, it just, you know, depended upon, I, I thought that if there were some members that were gonna be absent for whichever meeting we chose, that they'd be able to go back and watch the video and they wouldn't be able to do that if we were out on a field trip. And so, if there was any benefit to that, but I, I'm...
I guess the other option is to give us the list to go look at and then we all look at it and then we come back and discuss it. So, we do that kind of on our own and that way, either that or, I don't know what else will be on the agenda that night, but if we had a public hearing that went till 10, it might be hard to start at 5:00 and then not have dinner. But, you know, I'm just thinking of, of that as an option as well, that we go out on our own, look at them and then have your photographs to remind us and then we set a time to discuss it. That logistically seemed like it was easier than trying to arrange for the bus and notifying the public that they can, I mean, how do you, how do you get the public component in that?
Well, I think that, yeah, our city attorney's out this week, so I needed to ask him, but usually you would just have to, to notice the meeting for whatever location it was and so we'd have to pick a, a time.
Several locations.
You know, maybe it's Walmart parking lot at 6:00. And then from 6:00 to 6:20. It'd be tough to follow, you know, if there was some prolonged discussion on certain things, but I think we could do it. It's just what...
We didn't have, when we've gone out and looked at signs and things, have we always just done that as a subcommittee? Maybe, let's just, I, I can't believe that...
As a homework assignment? You just go look at it instead of...
Well, no, we've, we've gone out, when we had moving signs, we went out and looked at them, but I, but maybe it was a subcommittee, do you think so?
A subcommittee, yeah.
It was.
When we have a quorum, the public meeting laws require us to note, to notice it.
Well, gosh.
I like the idea of just knowing where they are and being able to do it on my own time and then if you could take photographs, then as a refresher, that, that's better for me.
I'm gonna be gone May 11th, so I would miss a tour, but I, I do like that idea of being able to go out on my own.
And I'll be gone May...
I agree.
I'm not sure, I'm May 25th, I'll be here May 11th. What were you saying?
I'll just agree with him, but going out on your own, looking at it, taking your time and driving around and...
Is that, that would be simpler, it sounds like.
Yeah, we, we could do that. So, I, we could work together on maybe four or five locations and then we could come up with some topics to look at at each specific location and then take some notes and, and then I can go around and, and photograph all of those and then we could talk about it. And I, we're working on some conceptual illustrations of a couple of different scenarios under, underneath those codes we're looking at and so we'll be able to provide those at the meeting and then we'll have David at one of the meetings and then we can go through all of those and, and cover it that way.
Do you want a little subcommittee of us to go around with you or do you, to, to do that or do you want to?
I can just go around and take the pictures and then we can just bring them to the meeting and discuss it.
Okay, and you'll, and you'll let us know?
And then everybody can go around, yeah.
You picked several things. Let's go ahead. Maybe it gets too complicated, so maybe you could just let us know the four things that you're gonna look at especially and we can all go do it ourselves.
So, if we know what those issues are, when we're looking at them, it would make it easier.
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, this parking lot, take a look at island widths and, and, you know, number of plantings.
So, we are just, yeah.
So, yeah.
Having the criteria would be helpful.
Okay.
As opposed to, yep, it's a parking lot.
Yeah, yeah, there's a tree here, it's kind of a nice tree. Okay, yeah, that sounds good.
What are we looking for? Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so, I, so, the schedule will be then that you'll give us a list to look at before the May 11th meeting and we'll discuss it then?
Yeah, I think that we'll, we'll, I can send that out in the next day or two because we've already thought about it and then maybe just plan on the, the May 11th meeting and then maybe plan on continued discussion on the 25th.
And Dave Rock is invited to May 11th?
Uh, I haven't, I need to, I need to touch base with him. So, he, he may not be able to attend one of those, so whichever is best for him, but, but we don't have any public hearings on either of those two dates in May, so.
Good timing.
It should be good.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, have we reached the point where we can adjourn? Or, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.